And get started. The Monday, May 16th, 2022, special meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 5:15 PM. Please join us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you.
Commissioners, we have an agenda for the evening. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Motion to accept the agenda as written, Your Honor.
And do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements this evening. Up next, we've got public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. If you'd like to make a comment, go ahead and approach the center podium.
Hello, I'm Barb Aldsey. I live at 1324 North Front, right on the corner of Front and Fair. So I kind of consider myself a Fair Avenue person. So I'm just, a couple of things. I just want to complain about the speeding on East Fair. I have called the city before. Right after they put the roundabout in, I was told that that stop sign down at Pine and Fair was never designated or designed for a stop sign. Anyway, the speeding is a real issue, and I know you guys know about it, and I'm sure you'll hear more from us. I was part of a committee in the late eighties that got the stop sign on College and Front, which was never designed for a stop sign either, I know. So anyway, that's, I just wanted to say that about the speeding. It's terrible. The other thing I wanted to say is, I went to one of the community meetings with Mr. Nyberg and the NMU crew. He did a fabulous job. It's very exciting that, is it Nyberg? Did I get that right? You know, obviously, I'm very happy that they're going to be developing that property. It's, obviously needs to be done. Oh, I leave two minutes on. Anyway, the only thing I find, found a little, a little disturbing, and I'm looking forward to an explanation, because I know there's a logical explanation as to why Mr. Mahaney received the bid, you know, knowing that he's on the NMU, what is it?
Board of Trustees.
I'm sorry. Board of Trustees, yes. And, you know, and obviously, I was aware that he had previously attempted to acquire that and make some sort of plan which didn't fiscally work out for him. So I'm, like I said, I'm looking forward to hearing why now, and, you know, what, you know, were there other bids? And maybe that's, maybe I missed a memo on that. But I'm sure that it's going to make a lot of sense to me after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder to the public that our chance to respond is during Commissioner comments at the end, or maybe during a presentation in the meeting. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to make a public comment at this point in time?
Tony Boyle, 401 West Michigan Street. I could actually answer that question. Veridia was the only bid for this project. Actually, I stood here in, on February 28th, when you all were looking at the memorandum of understanding, and I spoke up that this seemed like a shell game specifically to acquire this property for Veridia Group. And here we are. You know, the song and dance happened, and it played out exactly as we all expected. And then, at that time, I spoke about the need to engage in good faith discussions. I don't believe that the city has been treated in good faith. This has been set up from the beginning with this very specific outcome in mind. And I too went to the public forums that were hosted at the Northern Center, and, you know, when pressed, representatives from the NMU Foundation revealed that they had no guarantees whatsoever to secure any sort of affordable housing. They did not intend on making that ask. They said that was up to the developer themselves, even though that was included in the memorandum of understanding, that they must secure commitments for affordable and workforce housing based on the recommendations of the ad hoc housing committee report. That has not happened. I do not believe that will happen. It is not profitable for that to happen. So what I ask of you tonight is that we pump the brakes. We slow down. We ask, why does this have to be pushed through so fast? There was only a month for the RFQ. I mean, who has the, the time, the capital, and the resources ready to go to say, yeah, I'll take on a 23-acre, $160 million project, you know, in that timeframe, unless they were already preparing for it? So it doesn't smell right. You know, as someone who grew up in the township, this reminds me a lot of what happened in the lead-up to the dark stores issue. You know, all these major developments coming in, getting, you know, just a sweet deal to move in, boost the economy, and then as soon as they were established, and as soon as they could, they cut and run. You know? There wasn't any, any intent on investing in our community. It was a cash grab. And we, we saw that happen, and we're still dealing with the effects today. So I advise caution. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, Paul Schlegel, 2030 Wright Street. You know, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that, that Tony doesn't have the, the confidence in this project, maybe that I do, but I think it's because I've been on your side of the bench over there and worked with Veridia in the past. First of all, thank you to the foundation for facilitating this process, because, I mean, to me, it's almost like a dream too good to be true, to ask for the cleanup monies for the, for the brownfield and stop there. Plus, we get to go ahead with our ask for the city and do some infrastructure improvements. To me, in my opinion, I think it probably could have been a much larger ask on their part with the brownfield, but I just think that it's, it's fabulous. I haven't seen any reason to think that there hasn't been transparency throughout this entire process. And I, you know, you go ahead and, and take the brownfield and the demolition out of this equation, and you say to any large developing company, hey, we're going to give you 20-some acres, what would you do with it? And they could, if they wanted to, put together a really good proposal, if you were big enough and you had the capital. We don't have a lot of them around here, but from what I've understood, the RFQ was downloaded at least, or opened hundreds of times, over 300 or 400 times, if I'm not mistaken. So it's not like people weren't looking at this. They were looking at it, and they're saying, hey, is this in our wheelhouse? Is it in this community? You know, the fact that Veridia had already had a proposed development for that, that site, I mean, you know, good for them. But the fact is, is that now, through the efforts of the foundation and the brownfield process, it makes it much more feasible. I don't like it when people come through and they say that we need to incorporate this or that into a plan, a certain plan. Is workforce housing important to us? Absolutely. But I'm not going to sit there and dictate to a developer what they need to put on there. And we've had a couple commissioners, and Commissioner Bonzal did this earlier with another development with Longyear Corporation, and said, hey, what are you going to, you know, we want to, I want to see what you're going to do with this, the property in the future, and how that's going to be developed, in what manner, and how it's going to work with the organizations that use that property. And quite honestly, it's none of your business. Once they own the property, they can do what they want with it. But more importantly, the fact that they're willing to go out and, and say that we're going to work with the community on, hopefully, some options for workforce housing, or some lower-cost housing, you know, that's what we can hope for. And not say that there's going to be 7%, 10% or anything else. It's just, it's ridiculous to even think that you have the, the ability to make that, that demand. I think it's, it's really quite silly. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Antonio Adan, 111 East Barriga, downtown Marquette. Thank you all for letting us speak on this important topic. I just want to say a few brief things here tonight. Thank you to the NMU Foundation, David Nyberg, et cetera, and parties here associated with this new, exciting development, redevelopment project of the old hospital site. I think the community has a really, really big opportunity at hand, regardless of what side that you're on. And I just want to speak to a few of the housing topics that we've discussed here internally as a group. Thankfully, I believe that the NMU Foundation has done a really good job reaching out to the community at large within the short time span they've had. I think that what's really important is to think about our future in our community and what we want to see happen. With the site being so large, I do have a few concerns about that, but luckily, you know, we're all here today to listen to what the developer and any of the parties involved have to say about what's going to happen, and, you know, take it step by step. I think the community input's going to have to be really, really important throughout that process. And one of the, the main topic that I want to talk about today is just how important it is to consider affordable workforce housing, housing for people that live here, that want to stay here, that want to raise families, that want to have good-paying jobs. And I think that, rather than being divisive about the situation where it's, you know, a little bit of us against them, it's, we just need to find ways to really work together to get the most out of this development as possible, whether that be from a taxpayer perspective, long-term, you know, implications there are really, really exciting. But more importantly, I mean, it's going to be eight years before, you know, 2030, before we see any, any real impact. So I want to say just thank you again. You know, just really, really want to focus on that housing piece from my perspective. So thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay. All right. See, no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. So item number two on our agenda, oh, consent agenda. I skipped around here a little bit. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Hanley?
I have a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, so now we're moving on to our presentation. We do have a presentation and discussion on the former hospital redevelopment. I just wanted to say that I know we've had really a good working relationship with the NMU Foundation, now Veridia to get us to this point. Certainly, some discussions, some questions, some engagement with the public here tonight and at our next meeting to follow. Looking forward to this conversation. I'll kick things over to our city manager, Karen Kovak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So I did just want to kind of acknowledge a few people in the audience at this point. We have interim president Carrie Shuling, Dr. Carrie Shuling here in the audience, and we also have the interim provost and VP of Academic Affairs, Dale Kapla, as well as our vice president of finance and administration from Northern Michigan University, Gavin Leach, and CEO of the NMU Foundation, Brad Canaly here, as well as the executive director, good title here, executive director of Business Engagement and Economic Development for Northern Michigan University, Dave Nyberg. And there are several others as well here that we have been working with and, and talking with leading up to today. So at this point, we are going to have a presentation from the NMU Foundation, and we'll kind of provide an update and recap of where we were back in February, when we did hear from them, as well as the next steps and the process, and how we got here today. There will be also, I think, some brief presentation from the Veridia Group that is also here, and then we will be concluding the presentation from the city side of things with the brownfield and kind of bring it all around for some discussion leading up to our next action item. So without further ado, I believe that we're having either Brad, Brad Canaly stand up and kick off the presentation. Thank you.
And for the benefit of the commission, we will run through all three presentations and then go through the commission for discussion and questions after, unless you have a clarifying, like a very brief clarifying question, and we'll start that discussion with Commissioner Hanley, just so folks know the order of that. Go ahead, Brad. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Good afternoon on another wonderful, beautiful Marquette day. We appreciate the time of the city commission and staff to update since our last visit on February 14th. So I've said this has become a story of goodwill and a process that began with an idea in the summer of 2020 about finding a path for successful redevelopment of the former hospital property immediately adjacent to the NMU campus. It evolved with partners equally committed to a desired outcome, who had to say yes to steps along the way, and they did. Hospital leadership, local brownfield authority, MEDC, et cetera, and you'll hear some more in a while. Today, we ask the city to continue the process by authorizing brownfield redevelopment framework and begin to unlock what will ultimately realize a projected $4 million in new annual tax revenue to the city as part of an overall winning strategy for all. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave Nyberg.
Thank you, Brad, and good evening, commissioners. Thanks again for the opportunity to be back here with you all. The last time we were, we were here, you were, we were talking about the framework for a memorandum of understanding to align some shared interests with the foundation's process moving forward, to really evaluate whether this tremendous opportunity could, could come to fruition. We talked about some of the work that we had done since executing, since Brad executed the purchase and sale agreement with U.P. Health System Marquette, which really was a period of evaluation to understand whether this vision, as Brad just described, for the NMU Foundation to bring together the relationships and experience necessary to see this through, could actually happen. And that, that started with our environmental due diligence, which was graciously invested in by the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and economic due diligence to understand whether this project is financially viable. Of course, we relied on experts in the field across both spectrum to help us with that. And we told you that our plan moving forward was really to start to work against the next major milestone, which was identifying the resources necessary to facilitate site preparation. As you all know, this is a sprawling 23-acre site, and I'm sure we'll hear, you know, much more about the site in the, in the coming minutes. But the primary barrier for anything meaningful to happen there really is to demolish the existing complex. That's what our consulting team informed us of. And if that is able to occur, the highest and best use for a mixed-use development on this site that fits the character of Marquette is estimated at about $166 million. That figure may change over time, especially with inflation and interest rates and other factors that have changed since February. I have up here an aerial, I always find it's helpful, even though we, I think most of us live in Marquette or the surrounding area, just to get a level set of what we're talking about here. And that yellow outline is the 23-acre site. Of course, noted here is neighborhoods and the Northern Michigan University campus on all four corners of the site, along with close proximity to the Third Street corridor, which connects to downtown. And I don't have marked on here Seventh Street, which is the university's major entryway into campus, under the campus master plan and city master plan. This is a zoomed-in view of the site, just so we're all aware of what we're talking about. It's, no matter how many private conversations or public conversations we're having, you know, there's always some questions about exactly what is included. So as you can see here, those surface parking lots on the southern side, outlined in red on Magnetic Street, all the way up to the Nellberg Building and the adjacent parking structure and surface parking on the southern border of NMU's campus. And so you can really quickly start to see, if you're familiar with this area, the Northern Center being a modern renovation of our, really our conference and banquet center, where a lot of public events are held, really our front porch to NMU's campus, how exciting this project can be if done to fruition. So we, we get the question often, and I started out in our public information and community engagement sessions, I think you all know this, but I'm going to say it anyway, what the role of the NMU Foundation is, or why is the NMU Foundation pursuing this? After looking at that map and zoomed-in site outline, this, this site is immediately adjacent to NMU's campus. The mission of the Northern Michigan University Foundation is to align resources and relationships to advance Northern. And so, you know, you can see how the alternative of a mostly abandoned, dated 23-acre former hospital site to the, to the southern boundary of NMU's campus is simply not an alternative that we can accept. And so, as Brad mentioned, we started to have conversations with the requisite parties to see if this is possible. Our role really has been facilitating the process, starting with the evaluation of the environmental conditions and the financial viability, and working with experts that do this work to help us visualize and understand what's possible. And of course, what I think many of you may be interested in and hearing more about today, the procurement process for selecting a master developer partner. When we were here in February, we essentially said, this cannot move forward. The foundation will have to exit its agreement by May 31st if it does not have a qualified master developer that's committed to seeing the whole project through, if it does not have the resources through partnerships with the city and others to facilitate site preparation and site demolition, and if we are not able to, under our purchase agreement, cause for relocating the, the small number of staff currently in the Nellberg Building to a suitable location. So those are the three major milestones we've been working towards since February and continue to. Very important distinction, the Northern Michigan University Foundation is not the developer. We, one of those core functions was to find a qualified developer to partner with us in seeing this project through. And again, echoing a little bit here what I've said already, but really looking at that long-term, multi-generational impact to Northern. How are we being good stewards of our campus and the neighborhood surrounding it? And a sense of altruism here is working part, collaboratively with the city to realize a, a long-term outcome that benefits the city as well. I think you'll hear in Sean Hobbin's update that you're looking from a current site complex that contributes to about $140,000 to $150,000 annually to the city, to once fully built out over that five-to-eight-year build schedule, upwards to, I think, more than $4 million. And that's after the, the tax increment financing is completed and phased in over that time. So we understand that this truly is a win-win-win for the entire community in NMU. I'll leave this up here just briefly, but just to remind folks, this, this site has some history. As many of you know, and your predecessors sitting where you're, you're sitting 10 years ago, were, you know, very involved in the acquisition of the former Marquette General Hospital site from Duke Life Point, and there is, there has been some activity of trying to figure out what's going to happen here for quite some time. And as we know, that, that the site preparation and demo is really the critical barrier moving forward. So all of this work really in the last year to year and a half has been focused on realizing the optimal outcome for the community. Okay. This is really to tell you, kind of revisit back where we were in February, and tell you what we've done, and tell you what we're going to do still and what we're currently doing. So when we last met with you, we were, we were beginning that process of outlining that the framework for the memorandum of understanding that would inform the procurement process for selecting a master developer. Mayor Smith, I believe it was Mayor Smith's appointment of a special ad hoc committee of the commission to consult with NMU Foundation, which had also formed a special ad hoc committee to oversee the procurement process. You'll hear from my, our trustee, Jesse Bell, here in a moment to talk more about that, so I'll skip over that part. But that, that RFQ was issued by the Board of Trustees in March and closed April 8th. We committed to doing public engagement and community engagement around this, and really to inform the public, what you, many of you already know, why is the NMU Foundation involved? What I just covered? What is our process? What's the process moving forward? How does this mechanically work? How does the NMU Foundation, what does equity mean? What does that, what does, how does that relate to this project? Okay? And so we, we started off with a, with a level set at those sessions of informing attendees, all of those items, and we took questions. And we also took general feedback about what's important to citizens in Marquette, what's on their mind, what's missing, and maybe even some foreshadowing in the types of things that might be of interest to them at a site like this, that would improve the quality of life for them and their colleagues and friends. Okay? And of course, as you heard undoubtedly on Friday, the NMU Foundation Board of Trustees, on the recommendation of the special committee after consulting with the city, unanimously voted to enter into, authorize partnership negotiations with the Veridia Group. And I'll, again, I'll let Jesse speak more to that, because that's, that's why he's here. Since that time, I'm also happy to report that we, the NMU Foundation, as well as the city, entered into letters of intent, non-binding documents with, with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which envisions significant investment, I'll say that, I won't give a number, but we, we, we know that we have a, a pretty strong commitment from the MEDC to make a recommendation to the Michigan Strategic Fund Board, which makes final decisions on these types of investments, to allocate resources for demolition, which also helps us in the long run. So then again, that's another, another validation of the process and kind of that goodwill that Brad spoke ago, spoke about. I'll ask Sean to talk about the non-environmental brownfield-eligible activities, but there was also a commitment to support that long-term in those LOIs. And so here we are today. We, we knew this day was coming, but really, the principal purpose of this work session is looking at May 31st, which is your posted meeting for looking at May 31st, which is your posted meeting for considering a Brownfield framework authorization, or at least a resolution to authorize a framework. And it also happens to be the day that our evaluation period expires with U.P. Health System Marquette. Concurrent with all of this work, we are in a pretty good position for those alternative leases and relocation of U.P. Health System Marquette units. And as of Friday, we are now formally in the process of establishing a business development entity that would be a taxable entity to take on the project. And of course, reminding everybody, the NME Foundation's role will quickly transition to be an equity partner instead of the facilitator of the process. And I already covered the May 31st milestones. So at this time, oh, one more, sorry. We have a 30-day window after our evaluation period expiration for closing on the deal, on the PSA, that is. And so right now, that's June 29th. The NME Foundation's fiscal year transitions on July 1st, so we're trying to figure out if we can get some flexibility there as well. So there may be a tweak to that closing date, but it's going to be towards the end of June, beginning of July. Okay. With that, I would like to invite Jesse Bell, trustee of the NME Foundation Board, as well as a member of the special ad hoc committee on the RFQ process, to the podium to talk about that.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening. As a member of the NMU Foundation Board Ad Hoc Committee responsible for the hospital redevelopment project, I'd like to provide a little bit of background on the RFQ process for the selection of the master developer on the project. Before I get into the process, though, I'd like to address the question that Dave sort of already answered from his perspective, but the question about why the Foundation is involved in this project. And, you know, in short, in my view, we're involved to improve the community. You know, a better community makes for a better university, a more attractive university. And we are in a unique position to leverage our charitable status, our goodwill, our relationships, our access to all of the resources that Dave just described, not to mention the tireless work of Dave and Brad and the rest of the Foundation staff. But leverage all of that to turn this white elephant into an attractive, functional development that addresses the community's and the university's housing needs. And also, that'll generate tens of millions of dollars of tax revenue for the city. That's a pretty amazing opportunity, wouldn't you say? So, you know, we're not the first foundation to engage in a project like this or a project of this scope. I should say the first foundation, because we're not the university. We're a totally separate board that is independently operated. But a similar project to this is that the Eddie Street Commons, I encourage you to look it up. They broke down more than 15 years ago, and it's a great example of a similar development, successful development, this one led by Notre Dame, using an in-state developer. And I think they're just starting Phase Two at this point, but it's very impressive. And through this process, we've learned about a couple of other similar projects happening in Indiana and Maryland and other places. So there is definitely a history of this sort of project being overseen and initiated by a foundation. Okay, so back to the process. Now, from the beginning of this process, our aim was to conduct a totally transparent and unimpeachable process of identifying a master developer. Our goal was to generate interest from developers across the country. We wanted to have a selection of options. At a meeting in these chambers on Valentine's Day, I think it was, Brad Canali laid out the criteria that our committee was planning to use to evaluate whatever submittals we received. There they are, those considerations. Financial strength of the organization, demonstrated success, and a commitment to completing the project in five to eight years. At that meeting and subsequently, the Foundation worked with the city commission and your ad hoc committee to identify additional considerations, which were ultimately put to paper in the memo of understanding. Based on your input, the RFQ was issued on March 11th. We marketed it through media and also through direct distribution to master developers. Success of widespread interest in the project is evidenced by the, I think we had 180 or so downloads of the RFQ. And we also heard through various industry contacts that a number of national and regional developers were considering submittal on the RFQ. Ultimately, we received exactly one submittal. It's from a developer who meets the criteria we talked about on Valentine's Day and who shares the vision outlined in the memo of understanding. The icing on the cake is that it's a local developer. And with that, I'm pleased to introduce Bob Mahaney and Michelle Thomas from Verity Group.
Thank you, Jesse, and Dave and Brad. We're pleased to be here, Mayor, Commissioners. Should start off by thanking all of you for all the work and effort that you've put into this to date. I know that, you know, I feel like we're kind of late to the party, and we're catching up, in a sense. We're very excited and honored and a little bit humbled to have been selected by the Foundation to take on this project. I'm sure many of you know that we've been involved in this site, trying to spur redevelopment of this site in one form or another for four-plus years. I feel more than ever, as I stand here today, that this is the right partnership, having the Foundation involved. Without the Foundation, this project would not have gone forward. The Foundation came up with a novel approach that allowed us and the community to get a greater investment from LifePoint into the redevelopment of this project. And we've been honored and appreciative of the opportunity to help play a small part in that. Additionally, the fact that you're willing to consider Brownfield is, of course, ultimately important to this project. It's as important, it's actually more important than the $10 million that LifePoint is contributing. So we're excited to be here. As others have said, this is a critically important piece of property, in our opinion, to the city, to the community, to Northern, and so on. So with that, we're really here to answer your questions. And rather than have me repeat much of what's said, I guess I would, Madam Mayor, turn it over to you and answer whatever questions you have.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bob. Thank you all for your presentation. Nice to rehash the details and also kind of see where we're at in the process and where we go from here. I will turn it over to the Commission. I obviously may have some of my own questions, but I try to reserve mine until the end.
I think, oh, we still have to go through the Brownfield portion of it, sorry.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it.
Oh, great. Okay.
Little bit more to go. Then we'll go to Commissioner Hanley after that.
Yeah, I'm just going to run through Brownfield TIF and the estimated capture and repayment schedule and a breakdown of some of the eligible activities. I only have a couple of slides, so I won't take too much time. I thought it was appropriate to begin with, you know, this slide, which you've all seen before, but it's kind of my breakdown of what Brownfield TIF actually is. Brownfield TIF, or Tax Incremental Financing, is the primary funding mechanism for Brownfield redevelopment. It utilizes the value of the improved property to reimburse eligible expenses. So it's not like there's this Brownfield fund out there that we're pulling out of. You know, it is actually taking the taxes paid based on the improved taxable value from the investment of a developer and using that to pay back eligible expenses. So you can kind of see this in the chart. You have the pre-TIF revenue, so like the existing value of the property. As it is today, anyone receiving revenue from that is still going to receive taxable revenue from that. And then, as the project begins, that pre-TIF revenue is frozen, and you start to track how the taxable value increases, and you capture the difference in taxes paid, and you use that to fund the eligible activities. At a certain point, the project is completed, the taxable value is established and rises incrementally from there, and the capture ends at some point. The maximum is 30 years, but it can be anywhere beneath that. And then the full revenue is distributed to the taxable entities from there. So in this case, we can see the taxable value for the city will be zero, since the Foundation is a nonprofit entity. This allows us to pay back the TIF quicker. But all the stuff on the left, up to about year 16, is the amount that'll be captured based on the increase in taxable value from the investment that's proposed, and will be used to pay back eligible expenses. And then in year 16, we start to see a return to the tax rolls. This one thing that the NME Foundation really stressed was limiting the life of the TIF repayment. And instead of 30 years like we commonly see, it's actually much shorter. It is a year or two longer right now because of the addition, I believe, of the parking deck that originally was not included in the estimates when we were told 14 to 15 years, and the redevelopment of that isn't quite viable, it seems. One note about this, this model, and there are several out there, predicts an eight-year build-out. If it's less, then the taxable value increases much sooner, and we could see a quicker payout. And it also includes a $5 million community development block grant that is being secured from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. So really, it's a good conservative estimate of the payback that we could see for the Brownfield TIF. This is a breakdown of eligible activities. The environmental eligible activities total about $700,000, and then the non-environmental activities total about $43 million. And this includes demolition, abatement, site preparation, public infrastructure, and interest. Interest is a Brownfield reimbursable expense. So I believe the last time I was up here presenting, it was about $38 million, and now we're looking at $44.6 million. This is just a graphical representation of what the eligible activities look like. You can see that interest represents a large part of it, but demolition is the majority. And then, just to touch on it, the public infrastructure, there's a budget of about six mil, up to $6 million for public infrastructure improvement, including the reconstruction of College Avenue, something that we were originally bonding for this year, but put on hold due to the potential redevelopment in the site. And we would be able to be reimbursed for that expense now.
Sean, I do have one clarifying question.
Yeah.
So now the Brownfield, just for the benefit of the public, is a $44.6 million Brownfield?
Total, yes.
And it's a 19-year?
It depends on the scenario. This one, I think, is pretty conservative. It's the eight-year build-out with the $5 million grant from the MEDC. It would return to city tax rolls in about year 16, so it's a 16-year.
16, okay.
And, you know, if it takes longer to build out, if, you know, the community development block grant doesn't go through, which it looks like it will, but that just would be, you know, the slider would just go.
16 to 19 is kind of what we're thinking.
And if the development is completed sooner, then it would just be slid to the left.
Okay.
So it's around that area.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Appreciate it.
Yep. And so that's all I had, just a quick rundown.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you all. I think we'll move to questions. As Commissioners have questions for individuals who may have presented, they may ask you to approach the side podium, so we'll start off with Commissioner Hanley. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, I want to say thank you to everyone involved in getting this project going. I know it hasn't been an easy road, and I think it's important that we work towards getting that project, or getting the hospital redeveloped and to something that will benefit our community. Trying to think about the best questions to ask. I know that obviously we don't know what your development is going to be. We've seen, do you guys have any ideas on what the plans are for the property, or anything that you can share with us at this point to see what we'll be doing with it?
Certainly. I believe that in the RFQ that was put out by the Foundation.
Mostly, this is for the public in this, I'm sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know that the public had gotten the RFQ yet, so I was just hoping that you could go over it a little bit for the people in the audience.
Certainly. Do they have the, do they have the sheet that showed the site plan from the RFQ?
Do they have it?
Oh, to bring up on the screen, you mean?
Yeah. I think that might be helpful, if that's possible.
I guess I'm, we can figure that out.
I can describe in general.
Yeah, no, I think we, it'll just take a moment.
Is the RFQ right there?
No, don't be sorry. It's a good question.
So there's a couple of overarching things that went into our site plan work so far, and I want to emphasize, this is very conceptual. I can guarantee you it will change, okay? There's a lot more due diligence work and design work that needs to be done before we'll have, you know, the final or close-to-final site plan. But this does give you, I think, a really good idea of, conceptually and strategically, where we want to go. One of the overarching objectives in this was, first and foremost, to respect the surrounding neighborhoods. Those are well-established neighborhoods, and whatever we did here, we wanted it to complement those, the surrounding neighborhoods to the east, south, and west. Connectivity of the university was also really important, as was green space. And so we were able to accomplish that through, right through the heart of the four-and-a-half-plus square block area, is that area identified as a greenway. So it accomplishes both of those goals. We wanted to have a broad array of housing options, and I'll speak to that as well here shortly. But these housing options had to be placed in a way that they had the least amount of impact and complemented the surrounding neighborhoods as much as possible. So that's why, if you look here on the bottom of the slide, which is to the south, south of Magnetic, where the surface parking lots are for the most part today, the concept there is for, calls for townhouses and bungalow-type housing. The same housing is up on the southeast corner of, what street is that running north-south?
North-south?
North-south.
Preska Street?
Help me out.
Prescott Isle?
No, 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 no.
South Street?
No. Hebert Court. Hebert Court. Hebert Court and College is also most likely going to be townhouse or bungalow. We're still exploring that. And then you'll see up in the northwest corner, there's faculty. And that's a concept that we've been in discussion with, with the Foundation and in regards to, can we create a component that addresses the urgent need to provide quality, affordable, attainable housing for incoming faculty that are just starting out their careers? And so this is just put on there as a placeholder. One of the things that we really want to do is have this broad array of price points, which will also help bring a broad array of demographics into the site. So we don't want to necessarily put faculty in one corner in and of by the So we don't want to necessarily put faculty in one corner in and of by themselves. I would envision that ultimately, we would have the housing product interspersed throughout all of the owned housing units on the site. But you can see that the owned units are largely around the periphery of the site. And then, one of the areas that I want to, well, as long as we're on housing, higher density there where you see the bright yellow, you know, next to the, just to the, just to the east of the greenway, that would largely be rental housing. Multi-story rental housing where we can get some density in there. The north side of that, along college, what we'd like to do along college, as we envision it, is to create a small retail slash professional office storefront development along there. The PAC to the north is, is something that's a little bit of a, not, I don't want to call it a crazy idea, but I want to emphasize that it is in no way a done deal. That's, that's where, in response to the university's campus master plan, there's a call for a new performing arts center. And we've identified that as a place where that performing arts center could go. We think that that brings a lot of, a lot of synergy to the overall development as well as the university. And I'll come back to that momentarily. And then last, but certainly not least, something that we think is very much needed in Marquette and the county is a senior living community. And that's what we have in the orange on the west side of the, of the property. The portion adjoining Seventh Avenue, so it's bounded by college to the north, Seventh to the west, and Magnetic to the south, would be, again, townhomes or bungalows for seniors. Essentially, an active living community that then graduates into independent living and some level of assisted care in the higher-density living area that you see. So that would be multi-story apartments for seniors. The, we're taking advantage of a trend here that's nationwide. It's been tested and performed very well in a number of places around the nation. Arizona State's one example. President Truelling just came from, from seeing this firsthand at Arizona State, where they've embedded senior housing right into campus of Arizona State. And the idea is that, you know, today, more than ever, we're learning throughout our lifetimes. We have to keep learning, keep learning. And as someone who's getting more senior by the day, I can, I can confirm that, you know, you keep learning and you keep your, you know, it just keeps you going. And so one of the things that we hope to achieve here, we have not had any discussions whatsoever with the university on this, is but to create a lifelong, a lifelong learning center within this senior living. And perhaps also use the, the Performing Arts Center to also encourage senior involvement in the arts. It's our personal hope that the Performing Arts Center could be built to a scale such that it could also serve the community of, of Marquette as well. You can also see in the white between the Performing Arts Center, the greenway, excuse me, and the faculty is the existing parking structure. And the plan for the parking structure is to, as Sean just alluded to, is to renovate that. It requires a lot of repair. I think, what is it, 8 million, Michelle?
Nine.
It's up to nine. $9 million. But yet that is still far cheaper than constructing a new parking deck. And that parking deck holds 500 stalls. So this is another synergistic opportunity, in our opinion. If we can, we repair that parking deck, that parking deck can service both that Performing Arts Center. It can service, you know, the, the residents of this area. And it really condenses parking into a small footprint, which saves a lot of space for greenery. The, the one thing we really wanted to avoid was a lot of, you know, these, sorry, these seas of asphalt that you see out at, on the campus right now, south of Magnetic. We really want to try to do away with those. So we think that really helps us there. And that parking deck can also serve the Northern Center. Not shown on here, but in our plan is connecting bridges from that parking deck to both the, the PAC and the Northern Center. So another thing that doesn't show up in here, but it's, it's one of our objectives, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but one of the things we'd really like to introduce into the, into the greenway is outdoor public art. Not sure exactly where that's going to be located, how it's going to be placed, but that is one of the goals. It's a personal goal of mine to see that we, that we achieve that. So that was a long-winded answer. I'm sorry.
That was a perfect answer, I think. I think it's what everyone in this audience needed to see is what your plans are for it. I think a lot of the fear that comes with this project is not knowing what the, what the area is going to change into. And I think letting people know where that stands is helpful along the way. The only other thing that maybe, I don't know if you have a rough estimate of the number of units of housing you'd be putting in to the air, the whole project? Obviously, it's not held in ground.
It's approximately 300 in this plan.
300, which is a huge influx for the, for the UP. I believe I spoke with our city manager, and she said the average number of units that come in a year to the whole UP is 400 units of housing. So I know this will be spread out over five to, our five to seven years of the build time, but that's still a massive number that we'll get right in our city. At all different price points, of course, but that will move people into different areas. So I do think that that is a very good way of doing this at this point. For now, that's all the questions that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Portimare?
Commissioner Hanley, I think, actually asked the questions I was going to ask. And Mr. Mahaney did mention the green spaces and parks, which was one of the only other questions I had at the moment. So I might have to pass for now.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Again, also, thank you, everyone who's been involved in this. This is, this is a years-long process and, and a lot of good people and good ideas over this, over this time. There's a couple of things I want to address. In fact, I also want to, this is the level of questions that I sent last night. And staff turned it right around, three and a half pages of questions from me and from the community. And I think, also, I want to, there's like a couple of broad, big-picture things. And then maybe talk about what we're also going to talk about today. Or talk about, excuse me, the actual details of what's being, what's being revealed today. The question of trust has come up, I think, maybe once or twice today, but it's come up a lot in my conversations with the public. And from various different parts of the public as well. And fundamentally, the quest, the concern, I think, in many of these different questions around trust are who decides and who benefits? And the, many people have expressed concern to me that, that inside the process were people who knew they were going to benefit from the process. And if someone could please just speak to that, because I think that's, I, I've heard that ongoing for the entire time of this project. That, that there was an inside known understanding of who would benefit from this project. And I don't know who the right person is to answer that question, but that's the question that keeps coming to me from the public.
Do you want to start, or you want me to?
I'll start. I, I take exception to the, to the implication there. You know, we, we did this public process. We solicited submissions. You have no idea who's going to respond. We had no idea whether Veridia Group would respond. They already said no to the project once, right? And I, I'm assuming that you're, you're implying that we knew that Veridia was going to be selected. We didn't even know who would provide the submission.
It's not, first off, this isn't just me.
Sure, I understand. I'm sorry.
It's literally dozens, dozens of people have asked me this question.
Sure.
I'm an elected official of the entire city.
Yeah.
So I just want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking offense, but I am understand, I'm just trying to be absolutely transparent.
Yeah, I understand.
And, and so the, the, the question of, I just, so I, basically, I felt like I was teeing it up for to give you a chance to respond to the question, really. I mean, that sometimes, that's my job up here, is to just throw the softball so that somebody can hit the ball. That's all I'm trying to do, really.
Well, I totally missed it. Instead, you know, it, I, I, it feels like the integrity of the process and the integrity of the individuals involved in the process is being questioned. And that's just, that's hard for, I mean, you know, put yourself in those shoes. But, I mean, I can, I can assure you that I had no idea who the selected developer would be at any point in the process until after we received, you know, until that deadline of April 8th passed and we saw who the submittals were. And even when we had just one submission, we didn't know whether we would recommend to the board that Veridia be selected. We needed to review their submission. And, you know, I understand that the city commissioner, or at least the committee, had an opportunity to review that submission with the developer name redacted. And I, I believe that you had a very positive response to the submittal. It is an excellent submittal. So, so no, I mean, I can, I can tell you with certainty that there was no foregone conclusion or.
And, and thank you. I, I, again, this, some of this is about bringing transparency.
You know, the, the original concept of this was born of the pandemic, when the federal government changed the rules for deduction. And when the corporate reduction on charitable giving went to 25% from 15, then SISAD said, oh, we might be able to do something here. So we went to the hospital with a concept, which has been changed more into a business transaction than a charitable transaction is formed. But part of that was conversation I had to have with the board. The board executive committee said, all right, if we could do this, this is a heavy lift. And it'll be a lot of parts. And we'll need to measure it out across the various steps and where we go. But there's a path here, and let's see where it goes. And they agreed to that, and they also agreed to front 250, up to $250,000 of non-donor foundation assets or resources to pay for consultants to get to this certain point, which we've now achieved today. And, but part of the whole thing is that, in my role, anything that I enter into as CEO would have to be disclosed to the board if there would be a potential conflict. So it would be my responsibility to disclose to the board that there's any potential conflict. And, and of course, we, it was reported publicly that we benefited from pro bono information provided by Veridia from their previous due diligence, which if we did not have that, it would have taken us another six months and probably another $100,000 to get to the point where we are today. And that was, and that was disclosed upfront, and other steps were taken, which we can go into. But just, that's the overarching view. So there was a lot of reputational aspects to this, personal and professional, that we were all clear on our, our conflicts, if we were to be honest.
Thank you very much. And I just want to reiterate that it was a change in tax law that allowed there to be an increase in, and so is it fair to say that we're getting a substantial federal investment in this project at this time because of the tax benefit that change that was made?
That, that's now expired. That point has expired. But yes, there's, the final form of this, because it's now of a business transaction for various tax reasons, on the other, the other side of the partnership here, which we don't know about, because that's not our responsibility to be involved on that side of it. But yes, there will be an, if you want to do the translation in some fashion on accounting basis, there will be some translation back to the benefit through the various tax structure, correct? But that will not be the full $10 million.
Yeah. And, and so, so in making this deal possible, there had, what, what changed from the initial to the second was that there was a change in tax law. And then that made it possible to have a, loosened up the amount of money that was available, or increased the amount of money that was available, so that this, because the scope of taking the, the buildings down is so substantial. I can remember back when it was just $10 million. And of course, now it's 20, and that was 10 million. I'm joking, because 10 million's a lot of money. And so I just, thank you for taking the, answering that question. Truly, it is, is asked in just in the terms of, it's a complicated deal. Let's, let's just be really clear about who is doing what, who benefits, and who decides. When those things are made clear, I think that's when trust can begin to be developed.
And so I'd just like to close with the element of risk. So the foundation shares the risk that we could lose that portion of it. But we're not risking any of our assets, our current assets, which are donor assets and that. But the other part of it is, is that the parties that come into this, the master developer, any partners they may bring in, are taking the risk upfront also to invest the money for which there's no prescribed return immediately. It could turn out to be, the market could grow to be a 50,000-person city and, you know, there'll be a big win there. But right now, putting up $166 million of primarily debt financing is a big risk. A big risk, a big investment in the city. And, and it's yet to be determined exactly how things are going to play out, because by action of the city tonight, and then ultimately in two weeks, that opens the door for a big, big face to deliver an unencumbered site. But then the work of the development work begins, and a lot of things are going to change over the next 18 months to see how that finally materializes. Thank you.
Okay. And so, thank you. And I just wanted to start there, because like I said, literally dozens of questions about that. So the, on the other, the other big picture question is timing. And this May 31st deadline. So we just found out this morning that the federal government is now going to be offering a number of different new incentives for, for affordable housing that we may be able to take advantage of, because we've already changed our zoning. We've done some things. We've taken steps to promote development. And so it's been, and honestly, even when we talked back on February 14th, I feel like it really isn't still entirely clear to me about who decided the, the May 31st deadline and why is that so important when we, there's so much, so many questions and concerns about the project.
Sure, I can take that one. Thank you, Commissioner. So again, the foundation entered into a purchase and sale agreement with U.P. Health System Marquette September 28th, 2021. And that was based off of a non-binding letter of intent that really memorialized a lot of what Brad's described as kind of the initial thoughts and pathway for how this might occur. The foundation, as Brad's also described, obviously is not in a position, we're a facilitator of this process. We're trying to seek an outcome by bringing together resources and relationships, which we've done. But the foundation cannot take the risk on of acquiring the site with no certain outcome that there's going to be funds to offset the site preparation and demolition, that there's going to be a qualified master developer, and all the things I've talked about earlier. The purchase and sale agreement included an evaluation period to figure out all of that, or a due diligence period, whatever you want to call it, that expired originally on February 28th. We've already went to life point to say, we've gotten the environmental due diligence. We've done the economic studies. We haven't even scratched the surface on the procurement process or identifying a master, qualified master developer or the resources for site demo. We need more time. And that was an extension by amend, by virtue of an amendment to our purchase and sale agreement. And they said that they were willing to extend that period to May 31st. So that's where the date really comes from. But now, you know, I'll say to your point on federal and state programs, I get those in my inbox too, right? They're through, you know, ARPA and other resources coming from the federal government. There's a lot of resources dedicated to housing. And those are the types of things that, you know, predecessor programs through MISTDA and others, that's what we need the master, that's why we need a master developer that's, has the expertise and the knowledge to be able to go through the pre-development process for. And, you know, that, those are the types of considerations that we would expect to be given moving forward. But there's no way, of course, to, it would be backwards to try to determine the scope and blend of the project that those types of programs are going to require before the foundation can close on its agreement with U.P. Health System Marquette. So that's a long way of saying, those programs will still be there and available for the pre-development conversation. But the foundation needs to know under its agreement whether or not. But the foundation needs to know under its agreement whether or not to exit by May 31st. So that's what's really driving all of, um, the, the deadlines that we're working back from.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so then, um, then I think my only other big question is, um, and this is more about the city, I will say, is, is the question of what is, what community benefits are coming through this investment? And again, because again, always the question is who decides, in my time in government, in my time in public policy for 30 years, who decides and who benefits are always going to be the questions. And if you can under, if you can get that explained and clear and understand, then you can build the trust and then you can take the risk. And, uh, I am very concerned that the public benefit is a road that we would have had to rebuild anyway. And I, I really, um, do, I, 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 the, you know, having seen this now tonight, we, and we'd seen a very preliminary version of this before. I, I, it does seem like these conceptual ideas are ones that would help Marquette grow in really healthy ways. And thank you for that. And, um, but, but at the same time, the, and, and those investments are coming because we are making a commitment now of 19 years or hopefully a little less on this brownfield. So that would, you know, that we'll take the buildings down in order to make this vision. And I'll call it a vision because it's not decided yet. We're going to take the buildings down to allow this vision to happen for Marquette to grow. And there, I'm, the other thing I'm hearing over and over and over again is, um, how do we get more housing, you know, sooner? I, you know, I voted yes for the development project out on 553 because that's going to give us housing, like, in a year and a half, hopefully, right? I mean, that's, that's fundamentally, that's why I voted yes on that project. That gives us housing in a year and a half. We need that, you know, we need that housing yesterday. So the, but on, on community benefits of this incredible investment for 300 units of housing and a, and an incredible, and these really sound like very, um, important and valuable investments. The question of how we know that it's going to meet our community needs. I don't know if there's anything else you want to say about that or you can say about that. I, I know that's what, that's your intent, but I, when it's, when it's, I, it would give, it would feel stronger if there was something that could be said about what really we are, how, how we're going to work together to figure out really what those community needs are in year eight or year, you know?
Sure. I'm, I'm going to start with just a general statement to your question of kind of, you're pondering the public benefit of this project, right? And, and I, I also want to give Sean a heads up because I'm going to ask him to chime in or maybe Sean or Karen to talk about how the brownfield works because it's not a, this is something we heard in the community information sessions too, right? Like we'd hear comments like, um, oh, you know, this is a $19 million, you know, investment from public dollars. No, that's not true. This is actually public dollar, this is, this is tax revenue that wouldn't be received but for this project moving forward. So that's why we're asking for use of the statutory tool that allows those, that new increased value to occur, thus the tax revenue to increase, to reimburse the process or eligible activities that are required to make it happen in the first place. So, uh, Sean, and maybe kind of, that's your heads up, Sean, and kind of clean up what I get wrong. Um, but I think the other, the public benefits in addition to any, you know, a $4 million, you know, not having to bond for $4 million reconstruction of College Avenue. The first major one that's obvious to me to the city and taxpayers is that, you know, $4 million plus in new revenue that will occur to the city or, you know, after the brownfield TIF is, is completed. And of course phased in over that time period as well. And I'll just point out as a kind of a side note to that, you'll see if you're following brownfield proposals, it's not uncommon at all for the proposed recapture period to be 30 years or more. This, you know, because we have a sense to try to make this a win for the community as much as a win for N M U's campus. We're proposing to aggressively, you know, go after that in a 15 year, maybe it's a 16 year now, period. The other ones are, you know, non-monetary is, and I'm going to, I don't know if David Allen is here still, is, there he is. This is credit to David because he explained this so perfectly, um, when we were doing a sit down with Mike Settles a couple of weeks ago in saying, listen, um, there are two futures here. One future is one where we don't adopt this plan and we have an undetermined, probably very negative future on this site for years to come. And we'll be asking ourselves, why didn't we do something about it? The other future is one where we authorize the statutory tool that doesn't require an investment of city tax revenue. And, and otherwise brings in additional taxable value to make a dynamic development occur in Marquette. Oh, by the way, is going to add, I think it's 500,000 square feet of additional housing. You heard roughly 300 units blended across various housing demands, some cultural amenities, better connections from N M U's campus to the community. Again, these are a lot of the reasons why the foundation's involved. These are things that would not occur but for use of this statutory tool. So I think there's a lot of, I get passionate, you know, about this. I, I could go on and on and on. But I think there's a lot of public benefit that's non-monetary, but the monetary benefit is also pretty substantial. So that's the way I would answer your question. If you're getting those types of questions from constituents, we've been, we've been having this dialogue for months and especially in our community engagement sessions. So that's, that's, that's what I wanted to say, Commissioner, and I appreciate the question. Sean, did I get anything wrong or did I miss anything on Brown?
No, no, I, I think you covered it quite well. And, and I'll just say, you know, we've been speaking with the foundation for, I think it's over half a year now. And basically the things that Brad identified are the things that we've seen as important. It's been a, you know, priority in the city, um, to see that those hospital buildings come down, those vacant structures come down, to realize some sort of tax revenue and economic development along the way. And additionally, this will pay for up to $6 million in public infrastructure, which is a fairly significant public benefit. All while limiting tax, uh, capture to a 15-year period, hopefully. Those are the primary public benefit goals that we've been looking at. And that's really within the capability of Act 381, Brownfield's plans to accomplish. We didn't really necessarily see a need to, you know, build a parking structure like we are, uh, looking at with a vault, you know, a public parking structure or, you know, a pier like we are with, you know, Founder's Landing. Really the benefit here is getting those buildings out of, you know, Marquette, rebuilding a neighborhood and being able to rebuild some public infrastructure we are going to have to bond for and pay back.
Thank you for saying that so clearly, that also, um, making those, helping make those connections really clear. I, I was just looking over, I think, um, in your presentation, you answered a number of the questions I had asked. And the, um, I think the, we're looking at a five, well, five years before we'd even start construction, four years before we start construction. Sorry, I guess I actually missed that point. And I mean, I, I understand again, pandemics, whatever, but it might happen. What do you think?
Our hope is to start, um, um, much sooner than that. It's really going to depend on the demolition and, uh, safety issues related to the demolition. But we hope that we can start on the periphery, you know, in the surface parking lots and, and if things, I, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves here, but I would hope that we could start sooner than three years, but I think three years is a very safe number.
Thank you. I appreciate, again, that you're saying these things in public and these are, and these are things that may change. I'm not holding you to that number, but it just have that sense out in the community of what the possibilities are and how these things might happen is all, all I was really asking for. So thank you. Um, I, I, I'm done.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, few questions, but, you know, this whole project defines public benefit. When you look at it and you look at every aspect of what will be coming out of it, it literally is a poster child for public benefit. Because I want you to think what would happen if we weren't doing this? We would have a rotting, falling down building sitting in the heart of our city. And remember how long we had the orphanage? And it only was truly by the grace of God that that was saved at the last minute. So let's take the orphanage and magnify it by, I don't know, a factor of 100 in pure size, and that's the impact that this building has. If we were able to get the hospital gone and a flat piece of grass growing in its place, we would probably be ahead of the game. So instead, we actually have an opportunity to have something that's going to be contributing $4 million a year to the city tax fund. That's huge. That will be integrating into the community in a thousand ways that we haven't even thought about. When Mr. Mahaney talked about the idea of, uh, the senior center, there were senior activities that could be focused within the, the performing arts center. The bell goes off in my head and I know what our senior center does and activities and around the city and campus. And there's a wonderful golden opportunity for coordination that just arrived. I will comment too, that I really appreciate in, in looking at his base document, uh, which was the return, I guess, or the performer understanding that we received. The document, Mr. Mahaney, that's on our computer now that talked about different projects done and what your potential vision would be for this project. And to see all of the references made to our ad hoc housing report and how it was meeting the requirements of some of the construction activities and some of the homes that we certainly need in the city. Every time we build another housing unit, it opens up potentially another housing unit that somebody can vac, can vacate from, move into, and now you begin to stir and change the market. And that drives prices down for everybody. So the opportunity to introduce a variety of housing options, 300, let's say, into the city with this project can have a terrifically positive benefit to the city of Marquette, whether they're affordable, workforce, faculty, whatever category you choose to put them in. The benefit will certainly be there and very powerfully. I did have a comment though, that, um, in the process of doing this, would Veridia be able to take those steps necessary to, to keep the safety of the area? The folks that are living in the community with all the demolition and all the construction going on for an extended period of time? And I'm sure that would be considered, but if there's any, any special mention you might make to that.
Commissioner Stonehouse, that's a, that's a great point. Um, because, uh, one of the things that we're concerned about is you got a nine-story building there. It's got to come down. It's got to be done by the right people. So the people that we've engaged, uh, that we've received, that, that the foundation really has reached out to, to, um, bid on this are folks capable of doing that. And, you know, the safety of the zoning residence is going to be uh, obviously paramount and taken into consideration in whatever we do.
Thank you. And as I was looking at the visuals you presented, the thought struck me that we have a very real need for public tra, for transportation to be integrated into that facility. Is that something that's also being considered?
Could you expand on your definition of public transportation?
I'm thinking in terms of bus service, linkages between, let's say, that, that build out in downtown, that build out on the rest of the university.
The short answer is no. We haven't taken that into deep consideration. I qualify that a little bit because there's been some conversations, um, I'm aware of at the university level, informal conversations talking about, and, and actually it is in the university's master plan, a campus master plan, I recall now, that was completed just a couple of years ago, to have a greater, um, I'm looking at Vice President Leach over here to affirm that I'm on the right track. But we, in, in the university's campus master plan, it calls for better connectivity through public transportation, university-run public transportation. Now, it's an interesting idea and frankly, I hadn't thought about it, is that if the university pursued that, why not have it run right through here and over to Third Street, for example?
Perhaps we can mesh our master plans at transportation level anyway, because the city's been working on that for some time without any verifiable, findable or hopeful results. And certainly it's a critical need, I think, in many ways for the city.
And especially if we have a senior center there.
Absolutely.
Really helpful.
I believe there will be opportunities yet in the future for public input to the planning process as the actual plans come together.
Yes. Will we have public input sessions?
Yes.
Absolutely. Yep. And I think we'll, we'll, uh, we'll benefit from having those sessions.
That's the only questions I have, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Mahaney.
Mr. Banzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and, uh, yeah, first just, um, I want to note that, uh, you know, Commissioner Stonehouse kind of took the words out of my mouth there with, uh, transit-oriented development. I think having public transit incorporated in, in some small way into the plans for the site would be very important. Especially as Mr. Mahaney noted, uh, with the senior housing there, perhaps students living there. I think that would be a really, uh, forward-thinking thing to do. So, um, I, I would love to see that included in the future. But, um, I, I really appreciate, uh, something that, uh, I think it was Mr. Adon or, you know, one of the residents earlier said, that, you know, we, we really need to find a way, instead of being divisive, to work together, um, toward a, a positive outcome for the whole community. Um, and I appreciate that Veridia Group and the N M U Foundation have both put in a ton of work into this process and have also assumed a great deal of risk to try and get a good outcome for the community. And, uh, and, and I also appreciate, uh, the fact that there are many different potential public benefits included in this, in this proposed project. And, and I think Mr. Nyberg did a good job of, uh, summarizing most of those. One, I'll lead off with one question for, for you all, and then I'll have a couple for our city staff. The one thing I think, you know, that I didn't hear Mr. Nyberg specifically address, um, in his response, uh, to the previous question was this, uh, you know, attainable housing or we, in the ad hoc housing committee final report, we refer to it as workforce housing. That was addressed in, I believe, Veridia's response to the RFQ, um, in RFQ itself, in the M O U, in the ad hoc housing committee report. Um, and so I'm just curious if you could speak to some of the possibilities of the site for that, because my understanding is that that is a component of the plans for this site moving forward, um, if I'm not mistaken, at least based on those documents.
Well, that's a good question. Um, and I would love nothing more than to stand here and tell you, we're going to have X number of units at Y price today. And I can't do that. Having said that though, um, we strongly support the city's desire, the community's desire to include an attainable housing component. One of the ways that we're doing that is having a, a wide array of housing options and price points. That, um, alone doesn't solve it, but part of that is, and it goes back to what was, uh, said, I believe by Commissioner Stonehouse, is that every time that we can do a new build in the market, hopefully someone that's got an existing home moves and hopefully they're a city resident, right? And, and we get some synergy from that. And we can debate all night, you know, there's a lot of studies out there over what that, what that multiplier is. I can't recite it off the top of my head and I'm not going to try to. I think the way we solve this, the way we really skin this cat is rather than us sitting here tonight trying to nail down hard goals, if you will, is to commit, and I will commit here on behalf of Veridia, that we will work collaboratively with the city, with the foundation, with other stakeholders to, um, work towards achieving the goal of attainable housing on this site. We will commit some of our capital towards achieving that. I can't tell you tonight what that looks like because we don't have enough information yet. There's a lot of due diligence that has to happen. The other thing that's happening that we have to, you know, it's, it's, right now, it, it is, um, it is very real in our world and that is inflation and rising interest expense. Just to give us an idea of, you know, how much more challenging attainable housing becomes, a $250,000 mortgage becomes, a $250,000 mortgage a year ago would have cost you $1,042 a month, a 30-year mortgage. Today, that same mortgage is up to a 5.26% interest rate, so it's gone from 2.96% to 5.26%. And this is based on a Wall Street Journal article just a few days ago. So that's 32%, that's $340 a month more for the same mortgage. So it makes it that much more challenging to achieve these goals. But that gets me back full circle now to why I feel the need, the way we skin this cat is working together collaboratively. The city might be, might have programs that come through state and federal government that aren't necessarily available to a private developer, but we can tap into those. Commissioner Hill, you mentioned about several that have come across, you know, your email recently, and I think, you know, collaboration and flexibility is going to be the key to solving this.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I do appreciate that commitment to, you know, trying to make sure that attainable housing is included in the site and to continue working together moving forward. I agree, that's going to be critically important. You know, we have to look out on the commission here for all of our constituents, and you all have to make sure that you're doing things that make sense for your organizations, and I respect and understand that. So looking forward to continuing to talk about affordable and workforce housing moving forward, but thank you for that response. I only have a couple other questions, hopefully we'll be relatively quick to answer, for city staff. So first of all, I know that we've been talking about different amounts of tax revenue, annual tax revenue, that would be realized once the brownfield plan for this project is paid out. You know, a number like four or four and a half million has been mentioned. My understanding is that's the total amount of new property tax revenue from this project? How much would actually go to the city general fund once the brownfield plan is totally paid out?
Yep, so that statement about four to four and a half million dollars of city tax revenue is really talking about broader terms of the city as a whole, so all community service providers, that's our schools, county, and rec authority, and so on and so forth. So the city's portion would be close to that 1.5 net levy annually, is our portion of that, if you calculate everything correctly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, and that is substantial, right? I mean, that alone would more or less, if we had that available today, would more or less eliminate our budget problems. So, yeah, that's a lot of money, even when you're just looking at the city general fund.
It's almost exactly equal to the Milich increase we're looking at.
Yeah.
Sounds familiar.
Believe me, I noticed that. Yeah, so, but I also was curious, in the draft brownfield plan that we're looking at right now, that there's some local brownfield revolving fund capture included in that plan at this point, I believe? If you could just speak to how many years that's tacking on to the brownfield plan at this point? My understanding is that's kind of the last thing that's captured, and essentially, what would be the effect if, on how soon we would get that 1.5 million in general fund revenue if we didn't have that local brownfield capture?
And Mac McCollum is the brownfield consultant who prepared the plan, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the local revolving fund capture is fairly limited in this plan. And I think it'd be important to note that that revolving fund did assist with the creation of this opportunity, I think in the amount of, I want to say around $50,000 to $60,000 in initial environmental assessment fees. Looking at the information I have right now, eliminating that would not have too significant of an impact, but Mac, if you'd like to say something?
Yeah, we're changing in about a couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's good to know. And I certainly understand the value of the brownfield revolving fund. I know it's just something we've talked about in the past with previous brownfield plans. Finally, I'm just curious if we expect, and this might be something that maybe city staff actually can't answer, and maybe it's more the developers, but do we expect that this project will end up being, or a portion of this project will end up being, a planned unit development? And if so, what would that process look like?
That's, you were accurate in saying that's something I really can't predict. That's based upon the developer's ability to meet the current zoning of the property or not. Now, the current zoning of the property is mixed use. The planned unit development would be an option, and more in particular, when we get into the different types of housing options, density and things like that, that could happen. The either process, whether they go through the current zoning or they go to planned unit development, does involve interaction with staff and the planning commission for a site plan review and things along those lines. So has that covered for you?
Yeah, sure. So basically, we'll just have to wait and see, I suppose.
Yeah, the, it really, it really depends on the developer and what they're proposing once they get into the actual build-out phase of designing that project. And when they get into that, they'll, then they'll start to understand things such as height limitations and so on and so forth, and the bulk and density of the site, and the variety of uses, and I think they haven't reached a point of determining that yet when they're at the sketch phase.
Those are all the questions I have, unless anybody else has any other comments in response to that.
I just want to clarify one thing on the tax revenue. When we're talking about the 1.5 million, that is almost 10 times what we receive right now, which is close to $150,000.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I got the local brownfield revolving fund capture amount, it's $1.8 million at the end of the capture period. So if you're capturing $4 million a year, that's about a quarter of a year.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. I just want to acknowledge the vision of the foundation and of Veridia. I happen to be one of the three people that was assigned to the, to work with the foundation on choosing, whether they were going through their process of choosing a developer. And there was a lot of discussion, there were a lot of questions, there was a lot of presentation, but what struck me the most was, I don't even know what to call it, an underlying feeling of just the heart and the soul of what they were trying to do. And I highly suspect there were a lot of sleepless nights, because there was, you know, the risk that they're taking, the planning, the work that has gone into it was really something that struck me. And I feel that Veridia is also in that same line of just the strong commitment to our community. And being part of that group, I was very comfortable with the integrity of the process, and I know that some people in the community are questioning that. And I, you know, I'm not really sure, I mean, I don't, I suspect that maybe, because there was a lot of interest in downloading the RFQ, but only one response, it might speak to the difficulties of developers in putting together this kind of project. I don't know, but that's kind of the feeling I would have. And that also then tells me that we are so fortunate to have a local developer with the skills and the ties to the community and the proven record that Veridia Group has. Just committing to what's in the Northern Long-Term Plan, what's in the city's Long-Term Plan, and what we are trying to accomplish for the good of the city is something that I'm very comfortable with. And returning to all of this, to the tax rolls as soon as possible. So I really do appreciate all of that. You know, we're looking at accomplishing the housing that we've been wanting to work for, for a long time, you know, families and empty nesters and young professionals and owner-occupied and rentals and, you know, and the whole continuum of care for older adults from independent living to assisted living and skilled care is really an attractive process or concept for us. You know, and I hope that we do have families in there, and I hope we have playgrounds and some of that green space. But, and the commitment to attainable housing is there. We will be, as Mr. Mahaney says, we'll be working with them for this. So the other thing that I'm really excited about is that whole connection with the academic area and the community and the student training that can go on, and the community programming that can go on, and, and just the, hang on, what do you call it, the gown-to-town program or process, but whatever it is, it's just really making the university part of the community even more than they are. So I'm going to just kind of do a little 100-degree twist and just have a little question, and this is something that hasn't been talked about, all of my other fellow commissioners have asked some great questions, but I know that the purchase price is a dollar, and then there's a $10 million donation from DLP to the foundation, and part of that was for, from what was, what was said previously, is part of it is for demolition and part of it is for relocating what is already in, sitting in the Nellberg Building. So I stopped by the Nellberg Building today and talked to a couple of the staff people. And I didn't realize, and this is, I think, for the public too, is that there's 70 employees there. And there's the outpatient pharmacy, there's the blood bank where they store the blood for the, all of the UP, which, it can't be real easy to move. There's a medical records, which is huge. There's the building, there's some trauma training program is there, the bariatric service is there, and the outpatient mental health. That's a lot of services to move, and I'm assuming, and, you know, maybe, I'm just going to ask you to speak a little bit to how that's, if you have any idea of how that's going to happen or where they're going to go, because that was a little bit of the angst that I was hearing about today. Maybe it's a little too early to talk about where they're all going.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. It's a good question, and it's one that we've been working on since September 28th, 2021. And it's, you know, right up there with identifying the resources for demo and finding a master developer that's qualified and willing to work with us on this. And so I said earlier, we're getting, we're in a good spot. I want to say much more than that on level of detail, but all of the units that you described, just today, as a matter of fact, Provost Capital is in the audience, we had a meeting with staff, senior staff from the UP Health System to talk about potential collaborations on the School of EMT, which is also in, in the Nellberg Building. And, so maybe the one that you forgot. And so we've been having these discussions regularly, and I just want to, want to say that it's, I have a missed call from the broker, who I've been sitting here for, from LifePoint. I mean, we've been communicating regularly with LifePoint, as well as the local executives, and finding, you know, making sure that there's a smooth transition, that everybody is happy with the relocation process. You know, we've gotten some outreach from staff there that are like, thank God, we, you know, well, we're ready to move, or whatever, you know? So it's, it's, it has been a long conversation. You know, we have, we have a couple of options lined up. We did enlist the support of a local broker to help us look for commercial real estate. It was a, it's a pretty hot market everywhere, as you know, so it's been, it's been a creative discussion. And so that's what I can tell you, we're feeling, we do have some, Brad, if you want to add any additional...
It's currently very inefficient space.
Well, that's the other point. I mean, I, we can't speak on behalf of the hospital, but I don't think it's a secret, if you took a walk through the Nellberg Building today, that a lot of the units probably wouldn't be located there but for the fact that it's an option, and I know that, I'll stop there. I know the hospital has some plans as well, so I'm happy to, we will continue to be, you know, keep that dialogue open with the commission as it moves forward, but I'll end it there.
That's okay. I just know that the staff, not everyone was dissatisfied with their space, some of them were very happy, and just know that the staff is concerned and would like to know more, and I'm sure that it is too early to tell. And just, I also heard lots about how the rest of the buildings, particularly the 81 Tower, which is where all the patients are, is kind of falling apart and collapsing in on itself, so I recognize also that why perhaps we need to demo the whole site.
Yeah, thanks for the question.
That brings it to me. I have one clarifying question, and then I have a statement here. Sean, our Assistant City Manager, on Slide 3 that you had, I don't know if you have to pull it up, you could just answer. I saw the demo cost is now at $20 million. Is it still a range? I have heard $18 million, now I saw $20 million. I just want to clarify that.
Absolutely. You know, I might have to defer to Veridia Group on that. You know, in our conversations with the hospital, we, the question of the parking garage kept coming up. It was lower when that was going to be rehabilitated, and then they kind of jumped up a little bit with the, you know, expected demolition of that. So that really was the difference in demolition costs, in addition to the world's economy, I guess, but...
I understand.
That was my understanding of those costs.
Sure. What, I guess I could just ask Bob Mahaney, or anyone over on the NMU and Veridia wing over there, what the estimated demo cost is the last time we were able to look it up?
Yeah.
I know it changes probably by the moment at this point.
Yeah. The, when the bids were received by the foundation approximately six to eight months ago, it was $18 million.
Okay.
My personal view is $20 million, just from the increase in costs that we've seen from contractors in our, in our current projects that are underway in the UP.
Great, thank you. That's all I had for you. I know, I think most of you heard me say this, but I think this project would be transformational for the city of Marquette. This property is located in the heart of our city, it's in a neighborhood, it could be its own, you know, neighborhood or neighborhood adjacent, and I have a lot of hope that we're going to be able to continue the conversation and move through the next steps in the process, which would be May 31. Obviously, we've got to vote on whether or not to schedule a public hearing, but I think at this point, I would obviously support at least scheduling that public hearing. I want to say that I think through this process, this has been a long and complicated process. City staff has done a tremendous job pulling together pieces, especially our city manager and our Assistant City Manager, reevaluating when new questions come up, and then along with the NMU Foundation. I feel like we've really, as a commission, asked for a lot, and you have delivered what we've asked. So I really appreciate all the work that you've done to this point. You know, we were able to go through a process. I think it was instrumental to have a committee, a subcommittee of the commission, Commissioner Davis, Pro Tem Mayor, and myself sit in a couple of times with the NMU Foundation, with the Board of Trustees, and have some conversations before we were even able to get to this point. And I'll be honest, in those rooms, I drilled them, and I got a different comfort level than I had when I first walked in. And, you know, they're smiling and laughing, because I, I mean, I take my job seriously to ask these questions on behalf of the residents, and I think those questions have come out here, but it was kind of my way of prepping and making sure that all parties were ready to answer the questions that come up and be transparent and have a plan, and I really appreciate their work through this process. I feel like our job as commissioners is to represent the public, we all know that, but, you know, the vast majority of the public. And with this project, as much as I've heard a lot of concerns from the public, I hear a lot more folks in the community who want to see something developed on that site. They don't want it to be a blighted building, they don't want fences to go up, they don't want to have nothing happen there, and that's something that I think about 10, 20, 30 years from now, you know, when I look back, I feel like this is that pivotal moment. You know, we can either make a change and have something really exciting happen there, or I don't, I guess I don't see a whole lot of other opportunities at this point. I welcome any other conversations or ideas folks have on that, but at this point, it really does feel like this, you know, all arrows point to this as being, you know, the chance. And I appreciate those who've put the time and energy into making this work thus far. It's not been an easy process. That's what I have for now. Other commissioners, any other clarifying questions before we move on to the scheduling of the public hearing? City Manager, anything you wanted to add before we go there?
No, I think you've covered it all, and we're focused on, you know, our role in this is facilitate, helping facilitate the process, but then also really the demolition of those buildings. And, and really being part of the, you know, the catalyst for any funding that's coming through from the state, federal government does usually come through city resources, and that's what we are doing, and that's what we see with the MEDC commitment as well. So just wanted to make sure we're remembering the MEDC commitment on this as well.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to new business here. We've got the scheduling of a public hearing, former hospital redevelopment brownfield plan. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. A brownfield plan is being proposed for the redevelopment of the former hospital on College Avenue. The Northern Michigan University Foundation is leading a consortium of public and private partners to facilitate the redevelopment. The proposed project would remove the buildings on the property to provide for an effective reconfiguration and redevelopment. The foundation will acquire the property from DLP Marquette General Hospital LLC and is serving as an equity investor and facilitator to secure a master... is serving as an equity investor and facilitator to secure a master developer for the site. The approach is proposed to focus on housing of all product types and price points, including affordable housing, as well as commercial uses that will enhance and support the community. The specific components of the development will be based on an agreement between the foundation and a master developer. The estimated investment is $160 million. The size and scale of the buildings on the property that will need to be removed represents a significant cost and barrier to redevelopment. The project will not be able to proceed with the burden of almost $20 million of demolition and asbestos abatement without Brownfield tax increment financing support. In addition, the redevelopment is anticipated to require infrastructure improvements, including the proposed reconstruction of College Avenue and associated infrastructure. These costs are also Brownfield-eligible activities and may be reimbursed. A public hearing must be established and held by the City Commission for the approval of the Brownfield Plan. Approval of the Brownfield Plan will provide for the reimbursement of Brownfield environmental and non-environmental eligible activity costs, including environmental due diligence and environmental response activities, lead and asbestos abatement, demolition, site preparation, infrastructure, including the reconstruction of College Avenue and other public improvements, and interest through the capture of future increased taxes generated by additional private investment. The Brownfield Plan will be presented to the City of Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority at their May 19th, 2022 meeting. Notices will be sent to the taxing jurisdictions in compliance with requirements of Act 381. The City Commission is requested to set the public hearing for the City Commission's May 31st, 2022 meeting. The Brownfield Plan will be presented for City Commission consideration at that meeting. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation: Schedule a public hearing for the former hospital redevelopment Brownfield Plan for the May 31st, 2022 City Commission meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? For Tem Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to schedule a public hearing for the former hospital redevelopment Brownfield Plan for the May 31st, 2022 City Commission meeting.
And do we have a second? Mr. Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion, Pro Tem Mayor?
Just, you know, a lot of hard work and a lot of meetings went into all of this and I can't thank the foundation enough and Veridia for also, I guess, stepping up the plate as well as the countless hours city staff have put in and our City Manager and our Assistant City Manager. I don't know how much sleep you both lost over this, but between responding to seven commissioners as well as relaying everything back to them, it must have been quite a task. And I just, you know, I'm really looking forward to our next meeting and seeing a little bit more discussion regarding our Brownfield Plan and moving forward and hopefully doing something with this project.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
Well said.
Any other commissioners discussion? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. That will schedule the public hearing for May 31. All right, we are on to our second public comment session of the evening. Members of the public wishing to speak, please state your name and physical address unless it was already stated at this meeting. Anyone for public comment?
Tony Boyle, 401 West Michigan Street. A lot of great diplomatic softballs and propaganda this evening. There was a reason why they got so defensive when Commissioner Hill asked her questions. And that's because this, this whole scheme relies on the pretense that we will not question if Bob Mahaney, former chairman of the NMU Board of Trustees and liaison to the NMU Foundation, had at all discussed this project with the foundation and NMU in the two years leading up to this, between the failure of their first attempt at acquiring the MGH property and now, which by the way, happened at the same time that NMU awarded Veridia a $90 million contract to redo buildings on campus. Really, we cannot rely on this as a partner for the city. What is effectively going to happen, 300 units of housing, what it's going to be is two whole new developments equivalent to Founder's Landing, two new Founder's Landing. That is going to push the base price of housing way out of reach for average citizens. It is, average household, median household income in Marquette is $45,000. That will get you a house at about $160,000. Veridia's Hemlock Condo Association, which you approved $2 million in subsidies for, is starting at 300K. Their Harbor Vista property, which was also subsidized, those units are $1,800 each. And that's for waking up to the smell of the waste water treatment plant every day. What this is going to do is going to push us out. We are, people are not going to be able to afford to live here. This is existential. Like you may be looking at this like, wow, we have to jump on this opportunity because look at the money. But we can say no, we can wait. Worst-case scenario, this property sits vacant and yeah, it's ugly for a while, but then it goes to the county and then we actually have some more say over what happens here. I mean, we can't just go on hoping that people with a profit motive are going to come in and save us. That's magical thinking. That's not, that's not their interest. They, they need to make money. That's why this is being pushed forward. That is why all of this is happening. And that's not what we need. We need something different and that's going to be hard and require sacrifice, but it has to be done if we're going to survive. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I promised myself that I would shut up tonight. I promised myself walking into the room that there were a lot of good questions and a lot of good people were asking them. But I got to tell you, your performance at that podium tonight, if I was rating you on a Toastmasters performance, you all would have flunked. Number one, I've heard the word altruistic used too many times. This is your mission statement. The NMU Foundation, excuse me, I have to take off my glasses to read it. The NMU Foundation will establish and foster relationships to generate resources that benefit the strategic goals of Northern Michigan University. You are not, by any definition of the sense altruistic, and you can use any word you want, sir. You can use it and you can put it in the paper and I will come to every meeting and I will read that again and again. You are not altruistic. You're doing what's best for NMU. Why don't you just say that? You've got a prime opportunity to expand the scope of NMU and you're going to steal as much of it as you can. And the word steal, before you get indignant on me, sir, before the word steal is, you know the city's broke. You know we're so broke that they're going to raise taxes. You're offering us an anchor on a rope and the only hope we have is to grab a hold of the anchor rope because the anchor's going to pull us down one way or the other, but maybe the anchor rope will keep us going. Number two, sir, pardon me, you're in the center there in a gray suit. You have me agreeing with Commissioner Hill. You can count on the fingers of one hand in the last five years that I've agreed with her. She had a perfectly legitimate question for you. This city has been lied to by developers for the past eight years. Founder's Landing, you can't see the lake. Oh, we're going to build affordable townhouses for $350,000 apiece. And these are just the ones that come to the top of my mind. You, sir, as a Toastmaster professional, have no business getting indignant. Your response to that should have been, hey, we know you've been lied to. We've been here for it. We live in this town. We're not going to lie to you. There's no place for us to go if we lie to you. But instead, you put her on the defensive and for once, that was wrong. If you don't think that you have the trust of the people in this town, you don't have the trust of the people in this town. And as for what you're going to do to that site, what you're going to do to that site, you're going to do to that site. I'm not a developer, I'm not a builder, but I do know this, you're letting Duke LifePoint off the hook. They should be liable for $20 million worth of renovation on that. And Duke LifePoint, when they built their hospital, subcontracted out to illegal aliens and eight of them were caught trying to cash checks. You're dealing with people that don't care about this city. So please, when you're doing this, remember, I'll be in the audience watching. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name's Karen Schmidt. My husband and I own a rental property on 207 East Park. First, I commend the commission's work for finding solutions for affordable housing in the city of Marquette. I'm also impressed that Mr. Mahaney said he loves to continually learn and he is committing to collaboration. But now I urge the commission, NMU and Veridia, Veridia, to take the next step and ensure this development is in line with the city's climate emergency resolution of net zero carbon emissions by 2050, which is only 28 years away. Cities and builders all over Michigan are building affordable 100% electric housing or at least 100% electric-ready. Ann Arbor, Kalamazoo, Traverse City and Grand Rapids are already doing this. The cost of building all-electric is actually less than traditional natural gas construction and is healthier for its residents. Affordable housing also means affordable energy bills. Low to moderate income residents are paying proportionally more of their income on utilities. Right now, natural gas heating is cheaper, but as we are seeing in Europe, prices could increase dramatically in the future. If residents have access to rooftop or community solar, they could immediately be saving hundreds to thousands of dollars per year on their utility bills. The time to take action to reduce fossil fuel combustion in our buildings is now. This would be a challenging project. The first time doing this or anything like this is hard, but this is a perfect project to start with when we have partnerships with the university, city, community and a respected builder. It would get Marquette on the net zero path and be a model for all developers and builders in the future. There are many programs and organizations can help in the planning and making the finances work. Unfortunately, our children and grandchildren are bearing the consequences of our inaction. They will have to pay the increased costs associated with ever-increasing storms, fires and floods. We don't want them to also have to pay for expensive retrofitting relatively new buildings, especially when we have the solutions right in front of us. I look forward to the public input sessions. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Dave Gampana, 1711 Grandview Drive in South Marquette. I have to say, I'm excited and I'm pleased that Veridia has been chosen for this project. Veridia is a very reputable developer. It's a local company, they have local leader, local leadership. These are people that live in this town, this city. What they're going to do, they're doing, they're going to want to make Marquette a better place. And I have faith that they will do this. My brief association with Veridia is that when they start a project, and they have many projects in town that they have completed, they have many rentals or buildings that they manage, they do a good job. They do what they say they're going to do, they work with the city, they complete it, they get it done on time, it looks good and it complements the city. This is a good development company. We're fortunate to have them. I would hope that this commission keeps them going, keeps them, we need this project The interactions that I have with some people around town, excuse me, people want two things. The people that live in this city, the vast majority of people that live in this city, they want that hospital torn down and taken away. Number two, they want it redeveloped so it looks nice and provides a tax base to the city. Veridia can do this. I think this project is going to be a good project and I hope you keep it going because the people of Marquette, the vast majority of the people of Marquette want this done. They want that hospital out of there and they want the redevelopment. Pure and simple, that's all they want. So please keep it going, don't screw it up. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else?
Jolene Nalt, 1851 North McClellan, and I just want to lighten it up a little bit. I'm very pleased with the presentation itself and what they're planning to put into the old hospital's land. And I particularly like the senior, senior center living part because I'm not getting any younger and I am excited about that opportunity. There are not a lot of opportunities in Marquette to live in that type of a setting. Thank you and thank you to the commission and thank you to the presenters.
Anyone else for public comment?
Again, Paul Schlegel, 2030 Wright Street. One thing I just want people to kind of consider is why our property prices are going sky high. And as the baby boomers retire in other areas of the country, they're sitting there saying, boy, you know that one place, Marquette, I got to go back there and I'm going to go back and put down my, my final roots and retire and I'm going to live the life that I always wanted to live because I had to move away for my profession. Now fortunately for them, they probably went LA or Chicago or some big community, got the big paying job, paid the big mortgage somewhere else, has a house that's million, you know, somewhere between, let's say a half a million and a million five or whatever. And when they retire after all this time, they've got this big house sitting there and they sell it to the next person that's moving into that pay slot or that affordable housing slot. And they sit there with this pocketful of cash and they say, I'm going to be able to go back and buy just about any house I want in the city of Marquette because I made the sacrifices to go to these other areas at one point in time and I deserve it. And I'm sorry, I, you know, I do apologize for a lot of the fact that people are dealing with it, myself included, with housing costs that are just too high. But when you can come back here and pay cash for something and not have to worry about a thing and live in this beautiful community, you can't blame them for doing it. So please keep that in mind. It's not just all these other areas of politics that people are bringing up tonight. I love your energy efficiency ideas. It's very important to be carbon neutral in the coming years. I think that investments like this are probably going to make us have to reevaluate our utilities because once again, it's no different than the other improvements that have been done at Northern and many other areas where the efficiencies that go into new builds drive, drive our utilities in a direction, you know, usually up a little bit with storm, water, sewer, all those, all those issues because you're not using as much as you used to in the past. So, you know, those are things that we'll have to deal with, but you know, the injection that we're going to deal with, with the property taxes is marvelous and to think that this is, you know, to be a watchdog on this, I get it. I think it's important to ask for certain housing requirements and beg for them. I think it's absolutely necessary, but I think that the project as a whole is absolutely the best thing that we could have come out of this soon-to-be pile of junk over there. And I'm really excited for it. So thank you all for your efforts and thank you, commission, for putting in the countless hours that you have on this project.
Anyone else for public comment?
Ellen Simon, 700 West K Avenue. I'm really excited to see what can happen and will happen in our neighborhood. I've been concerned about it since the hospital left the neighborhood, so I'm excited to see the new plan. I have a couple of questions. Is Northern Michigan Foundation also responsible for relocating the blood bank? And what is currently going on with the individual lots that were sold, I assume they were sold, on Magnetic Street? And I guess that's it.
And there, at the end is when we have an opportunity to respond to public comment. That's okay. I'm going to jot down those questions and we'll get back to them.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Barb, I'll say, Barb, I'll say again. You know, I am very much in support of this project. I hope I didn't come across that I wasn't. My concern was the fact that it seems weird to me that we only got one, you know, one, what do you call it, thing? You know, one proposal, especially with the number of people that looked at it. You know, I wondered about the timing and was that too short a time? But anyway, it's here nor there. The only thing I didn't notice, that I didn't notice on this, and especially if we're thinking about affordable housing, is I didn't see anything about childcare. And I know that sounds really specific, but it seems like if we're planning and wanting to make this, you know, young families, affordable housing, the seniors, I mean, you know, the seniors always have the biggest voice anyway, no offense, because I'm there at this point. But the young families and, you know, thinking about incorporating some community childcare facility, blah, 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 you know, that's it.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing then, public comment is now closed. Brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start off with Pro Tem Mayor and go down the line.
Alrighty. Alright, so I have a few things I want to say as regards to some of our public comment here. You know, I, over the weekend, since the foundation made their announcement on Friday of who they select as their developer, I heard from numerous residents regarding Veridia Group and, you know, Mr. Mahaney's relationship with that and, you know, with NMU. And I don't really know how to explain this very well for the public, but both the commission and city staff, we, we have, I guess, investigated this rather thoroughly. And as far as I can tell, there is absolutely no conflict of interest here that we could find. Mr. Mahaney told us that much when we met as our subcommittee, which again, as Mayor Smith said, we kind of grilled them pretty hard during that meeting. There's, there's nothing that I think as far as a conflict of interest, it doesn't exist. I understand it may have that perception to it, but there's, there's nothing we have found where anything involving the university's funding is somehow financially benefiting Mr. Mahaney. I just wanted to address that. And with that, and something that Mr. Kapana brought up is Veridia's reputation. You know, you can drive around town and I'd be shocked if you found a single one of their buildings or developments that's falling apart right now. I've seen other buildings go up just a few months ago and one windstorm and the paneling and siding is already coming off. You don't see that with their developments. They do good work and they do keep on time. I'm hopeful that we can have some level of workforce housing involved in this, but it's too soon to tell right now that's going to be an option. And I do want to respond to one comment about waiting. For those public don't know, my full-time job, I work in banking and I watch our, the interest rates daily and I don't think they're going to come down anytime soon. We might not see rates where they're at right now for another five years. They're likely going to continue to increase over the next year or two. So quite frankly, waiting means the project might not happen, which is not an option to this commission, I don't think, or for the city. And I would just stress with that, I mean, Ms. Mahaney gave an example of a mortgage a few months ago versus now, that same mortgage is going to cost them an extra $300 a month. Try to imagine the amount of financing a project like this is going to take and what that interest rate difference could make for a developer's capabilities to do this We really can't wait and we have an amazing collaboration of partnerships right now to actually, like, we might be able to actually do this. I just want the public to really try to keep that in mind moving forward. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Thank you again, everybody. Go Democracy. Team Democracy. Here we are. Five things. Probably be quick. Marquette's going to grow. That hasn't happened in a really long time. We've gone through a lot of transitions, but we're growing. What is, and I'm a gardener, a big gardener. You got those two little leaves, I'm watching my, you know, my peas just came up, and then things are going to go like this. It's going to come, it's going to start a little slow and then it's going to come bigger. And it's really important as we grow that we keep this conversation going. We're going to have a strategic plan process. But yeah, it's going to be different here in a few years. And that growth of not just, you know, I think the buildings on the lakefront, but we're going to have more people here. But that's going to be a good thing. More kids means we get more investment to our schools. There's a lot of good that comes out of that growth, but it's going to take a lot of conversations and I really appreciate that we're able to start that. One of the interesting things with buildings is which buildings can be repurposed, like the savings bank building that's going to be turned into a hotel and apartments, and which buildings have to be torn down. And I strongly support what Ms. Schmidt said about the energy efficiency and energy improvements. But as we're developing this too, we've seen, that ShopCo site, how long is that white elephant going to be hanging around? We did the building development back in that time without, I think, thinking about some of these future needs. So, I really, I'm going to be pushing for climate-friendly buildings. I'm going to be pushing for walkable buildings. Because the other thing with the question about the utility rates going up, I can guarantee you that electric rate, that electricity sales are going to go up, Paul, and they're going to go up because of electric cars and because we are going to electrify our buildings. Whether, and I really hope that we do it to begin with, but that's what I do in my day job. The math is there. The electric sales are going to go up. And so, we need to prepare for that future because that's local electricity. That electricity can be generated locally and not come from far away. And then two big things. One is, thank you, Margaret, for agreeing, and, but we're not broke. We just haven't raised revenue in 16 years. We, we haven't changed our ability to increase, to keep, we haven't kept up with inflation. Inflation has increased 43%. Our revenue did not. We have fallen behind to that point that Commissioner, that Pro Tem Mayor was making. If we do not keep up with inflation, we are by definition falling behind. So, we have to think about that as well. And finally, I'm still going to push on community benefits. Yes, this is a tremendous investment and yes, this is a very important opportunity to transform the city. But in our, the way that our systems work, we need as a community to think about what do we need as community? Things like childcare, things like great parks, great parks with people in them giving tours and offering services, not just empty land, but parks where people can come and learn and do things. I, I got to be a park ranger when I was in high school in my local city parks. That's my first job. And so, let's invest back in our people. After-school care, all that kind of stuff, we can be making that kind of stuff happen. Last thing, if you haven't seen this book, it's called Fixer Upper: How to Repair America's Broken Housing System. Just came out in the last month. Terrific book. These system-level problems are national and we're here dealing with it in our community of 20,000 and in our region of 70,000. These are big national things that we're sweeping through us and I think it gives a great frame of reference to look at that book and I just want to leave it there and thank you again. Go Team Democracy.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Couple of things. Boy, it's an exciting future. I am really looking forward to seeing the plan, if you will, as it develops over time because I think it's just going to be absolutely stellar. You've given us a glance, a glimpse of the future and I think we just are hungry for more and that's, that's going to take time to certainly pull together. I would also point out that we have a wonderful hobby in America of conspiracy theories and we've certainly heard several tonight, I think, and we'll hear more. People love conspiracy theories and putting it all together and coming up with something evil at the end or magical or whatever. And that unfortunately is, is part of what we as Americans do. I would point out, again, people forget this, city of Marquette owns 95% of its own lakeshore. All of it is publicly accessible. We own it. It's for the people. It's usable. So, every time we get founders landing, I can't see the water, go closer to the water and you certainly have it. But please, people forget that and they, they should not. I love the multi-generational aspect of the plan. That's, that's a nice touch in a lot of ways and I think it's something that will be very, very useful. A point to make, and we've done a little bit of that, of this tonight, of ours and theirs when we talked about affordable housing. It's all ours. We own the university issue in terms of affordable housing because ultimately it ends up in the city of Marquette of not being able to find a place to put somebody, whether it's the staff, university student, grad assistant, professor, president to come because they'll be on the economy as I understand it. All of that falls into the province of the city of Marquette. There are people. So, we need to make sure that we understand that issue together and to how we can, as a team, better serve, better solve that problem. And this is a way of doing that, I think. This is a major step forward. So, just so we all realize and don't lose track of that. And lastly, I'm the senior commissioner, been here the longest time, certainly been in the city an awful long time and had an awful lot of contact during that period with folks at the university at various levels and for various reasons. I have the fullest confidence, not only with the Board of Control of Northern Michigan University, but the folks at the foundation, the ad hoc committee, the people that are making this project work, as well as Veridia, who was mentioned during the public comment, has been a wonderful developer for the city of Marquette with the projects that they've done, the way they brought them home, the status and the standards that they've achieved. And I, again, fullest confidence in all involved and we have to keep our eyes open and as we move down this road, but it is a transformational project. It is a centennial project. That's the impact it's going to have on the city when it finally is done in a lot of ways, not only financial with the tax side, the employment side, the living accommodation side, the betterment of the university, the betterment of that section of Marquette, the way it will heighten the viability of it and the viability truly of the entire city. Thank you for your time, Your Honor.
Commissioner Banzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I think that, you know, Commissioner Stonehouse, you made, you said very eloquently, you know, that we need to work together and recognize that we all have one shared interest in common and that this is our community. We need to work together to meet the needs of that community. NMU, you know, for NMU or for the city, for those individual commissioners sitting up here, it's not just a matter of dollars and cents. I don't think that anybody would say that, right? That's an important part of the equation, but it's also a question about what kind of community do we want to live in and about the long-term best interest of our community as a whole. And so, I think that we're, I'll just say briefly, as I mentioned earlier, I think working together is going to be absolutely essential to this, this project. There's going to be give and take. There's essentially a process of like negotiation and, and planning things together, public input. And I just want to say that I really appreciated hearing some of the ideas and thoughts from my colleagues, but also from the public tonight, from various things, from affordable and workforce housing to senior housing to the comments about climate change and energy efficiency. And it's going to be critically important that at the meeting, at the public hearing on May 31st, as well as moving forward at every other opportunity, that the public comes forward because when we say we need to work together, it doesn't just mean the folks sitting up here and the folks sitting over there, it means everybody in this room and in this community. Otherwise, it's not going to work. That's the reality. So, thank you all for your time and thanks to everybody who came to the meeting tonight.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, just a couple of quick things in response to some of the public comments. Karen, thank you so much for continuing to keep your, your, your concern at, in our forefront. And I know that you're one of our local experts in this area because you study it so much. So, you know, thank you for coming here and I know this isn't the only meeting you've been to, to talk about that and I appreciate it. Barb, the, you know, we did, we kind of missed talking about childcare, but it was in the response to the RFQ and it is something that I'm, and I think everyone here is really interested in, in addressing because we certainly have a childcare shortage. Margaret, I'm just going to respond to your comment about developers who are lying to us just because I don't think the Veridia Group is going to have a chance to do this. But the two projects that you've mentioned are not part of the projects that the Veridia Group has done and I would just invite you to become more familiar with those that they have done and if you still have concerns, talk to them directly about truthfulness and what they promise. And then, just in general, those of you, I'm looking in the audience, it's really nice to have all of you here because I know you're interested, you're here because you're interested and, and whether you speak at public comment or not, it's really good to know that you're here and are concerned about where we are going with this project and other things that we're doing on the city.
Commissioner Hanlon?
Thank you. I also will be very brief tonight. I think a lot has been said already. I was very impressed with what was given to us in the RFQ and I do want to touch on, I know that someone once again mentioned why no one else applied for this. And the simple answer could be that it might have been too big of a project for most other companies. This is a very large project with a very large ask, 166 million is a huge build and to have that much availability on books might have been something that other people couldn't do. Plus, Veridia is suited to the area in the fact that they know it. They know this area, they've done a lot of builds here, they're comfortable with the contractors and things that they work with and I think that gives them the leg up in knowing it and feeling more comfortable in bidding out a contract like this. Construction costs are crazy across the country and I'm assuming that that would hinder some developers from wanting to take on such a risk. This could turn out wonderfully for them and it could become a very big thorn in their side and they are taking a big risk for that to try and improve the community, so I have to give them credit where credit is due on that, that I'm happy that someone could step forward because had they not applied, we would not be sitting in this room right now because there would be no developer that would be doing this. So, I think we need to look at it that way, that we are taking steps forward and I am confident that we're going to be able to work together to reach the goals that we have as a community and with the foundation. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
I just had a couple of follow-ups that were addressed in public comment. I think I'll take the opportunity to ask if the developers, I think Bob Mahaney or maybe folks at the NMU, actually it would be the NMU Foundation. The blood bank, is that part of the relocation efforts? That's what I thought. And then, the selling of the lots, I'm not sure who makes the most sense. Well, I was asking for an answer from the, those folks, a response.
Are you talking about the residential lots? Those are sold, the hospitals sold all of the homes and the vacant lots, not the apartment lots, but vacant residential lots, those are not included in the transaction?
Will the plan for development over there impact them, whoever bought the lots?
I think I can, I think I can comment on that a little bit. So, I know, I know one of the people that bought many of those lots and what they're trying to do is build, build residential homes on them. And their challenge has been getting the numbers to work. They haven't been able to get the numbers to work yet.
Thank you. Appreciate the response on that. And then, I did want to also highlight, you know, Commissioner Davis touched on it, maybe some others did, childcare has been part of the discussion. I don't think at this point, we're able to lock down what that could look like, but it's certainly something that could be considered and I would be interested to see whether it's in this project or other projects, how we can partner with folks in the community to expand our childcare options because it's certainly a need. So, thank you for bringing that up. I think I've said all that I needed to earlier. I feel like we've got a good set of next steps. I feel like we have strong partners and looking forward to May 31, our public hearing. I did want to remind the public that it's on a Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM, the day after Memorial Day, so don't show up here on Monday night. We will not be here. We will be here on Tuesday night, May 31. I think that's all I have for now. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Just to further expand on the childcare discussion or mention, it was something that was discussed at one, at least one of the community forums that the foundation that was discussed at at least one of the community forums that the foundation had conducted, and it was actually quite the discussion amongst the participants. But then also, within the city, we have already taken some measures to kind of make it easier for childcare to be a solution, and that was done quite a bit ago, and we can talk about that more at a later date, but I do wanna make you all aware of that. But then also, I think the university, if I recall reading an article recently, is participating in the Tri-Share Program, which has been expanded up to the UP through Marissa's efforts as well. So, we're getting there. We are trying to do our part on the city side, and we hear those concerns and those important initiatives. So, I really don't wanna add anything other than thank you for the insight and the questions that had led up to tonight. It's been a great learning experience, I think, for everybody in this room during this process, and it was really great to feel the collaboration occurring, and I look forward to the next step. So thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:42 PM. Thanks, everyone.